In the September 13th, 2017 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board will come to order. And before we get started, I'd like to note the passing of John Powers, who was for a long time the superintendent of schools in the Oyster River District. Before that, he was superintendent of the combined Summersworth and Durham system. And John had a major influence on this district that I think we feel to this day, that John was a powerful believer in individualized education and this move towards personalized education that we're part of now, I think is an extension of the vision that he had when he was here. And John, I think, was also known as a teacher superintendent. I asked my wife, like, what was it about John Powers? And he says, "He hired the best teachers and he let them do their job." And trusting them that if you get the right people and give them the freedom, that they will find the way to be the best teachers they can be. So he gave a lot to the district. He gave gifts that we still feel the benefit of, and it's a loss to the community. So we need to have an approval of the agenda. Would somebody move to approve the agenda? Denise?
I move to approve the agenda.
Moved by Denise. Is there a second? Second by Brian. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Wait, wait, we're going to do an end-.
Don't we have to make?
End them to the...
Well, we have...
Addition.
We have the meeting for the non-public, or...
Well, I think we want to just add to the agenda something that came up in Policy Committee today.
Okay.
Where we would like the authority from the school board to have the Policy Committee review certain policies.
Okay, so where would we discuss that?
That's action.
It would be an action item, so how about we put it right under the Oyster River Coach Volunteers.
Okay, so assuming, would that be a friendly amendment to add that? So with that addition to the action items, are we ready to vote on that? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. The agenda is approved. So public comment?
Hi, I'm Dean Rubin from Lee. Good to see everybody. Congratulations on a new, successful start of the year with new later start times. You know, we heard about these events in Claremont, and you know, we think how awful they are. And then, you know, we hear about an incident much closer to home. And, you know, I don't know if anybody else is here, but I feel it doesn't matter who the president is, you know, we have to take a stand that this sort of thing is wrong. We can't tolerate intolerance. I read in the paper that it said the administration here wasn't taking it seriously, and I didn't believe that for a second. And I know you guys are going to make us proud in how we react to this when it happens. Thanks.
Hi there, I'm Brenda. I had planned to come...
Could you have your last name, please?
Yeah, Warden.
Okay.
I planned to come for some accommodations, but this takes a little more precedence. I'm here to represent the 1%. We might be small, but we are strong. First, my concern surrounding the representation that this is the first incidence that has come to your attention. That's simply not accurate. My son has experienced this type of shameful behavior both within this district and outside of it. It has been reported. This is not a one-off incident. These things have been going on for years, but what has been hidden is coming to light. These incidences should not be subject to the interpretation of those who hear it to then determine its impact or whether it warrants escalation to administration. Instead, a reporting system should be adhered to and notification made immediately. Protocols for follow-up must be created as well. If we only represent 1% of 70 students of color, why did administration not reach out with a letter, or better yet, a personal phone call notifying those of us who might be affected by this about the situation, reiterating your commitment to an inclusive school environment, plans to address the matter, and ask if there had been any concerns or issues that we as a family had experienced at school? 1% would not equate to that many letters or phone calls. I think it would have spoke volumes to families and been a very beneficial use of your time. Secondly, in education and special education, we talk about the implementing goals and plans around the acronym SMART. We are to construct ideas around the framework of whether it is specific, measurable, assignable, realistic, and time-related. I'd like to know specifically what actions are being taken to address the root cause of these type of acts. What are the plans? There have been a lot of generalized coined terms that I've seen thrown around, but what specifically are we planning to do? What is your timeline for all of this? And finally, I'm disturbed by the lack of notification to the community regarding this issue via a directed communication. We have received ones for traffic, for busing, for picture day, but nothing surrounding something as important as this. Learning of these incidences first by way of a newspaper and social media is embarrassing and indicative of a greater need for understanding and sensitivity regarding the seriousness of racial issues within this district and the acknowledgement that they're occurring. This starts with transparency, immediate transparency, but not under the pressure of this hitting the news. You cannot change what you don't acknowledge. We are not immune because we're Oyster River. We must be better because we're Bobcats. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Ruth Sample from Lee, New Hampshire, and Dean and I have two children in the district, in the middle school and the high school. And I'm here tonight for the same reason that Brenda is. I'm very concerned about the way that these recent racist assaults have been handled. So we have, according to the newspaper, which is my only source of information on this since the school district did not send out a general notification to parents, one student called another student a slave, told him that he didn't like people with dark-colored skin, and physically assaulted him. He either hit him with the baseball or shoved him with the baseball repeatedly, and other students witnessed this. And then, that was on an elementary school bus from Massway to Durham. And then I read that in the middle school that a white student and an Asian student verbally harassed a black student. And this is very disturbing to me, that I'm reading about it in the paper. And I'm not sure exactly how you're going to respond to the individual perpetrators of these assaults, but I do think that we deserve to know before reading it in the paper what's going on in our school district. So I am very dismayed by that, and I know there's probably no law requiring you, like the Buckley Amendment that requires universities to disclose sexual assaults when they occur on campus, but I do think that you should report them and catalog them so we can see how often these things are happening. The other thing I want to say is that if we treat these assaults, and they are assaults, as simply one or two students picking on another student, we're ignoring the fact that these are crimes against, they would be crimes if an adult committed them, they're crimes against a person on the basis of their skin color. And whether it's on the basis of their skin color, or their gender, or their gender orientation, these are biased crimes. And that means it's a crime against all students of color, and all students of a different gender orientation when it occurs. So we need to take that seriously. No student of color will feel safe in our district if they know that this sort of thing is going on. I also think that the perpetrator of the physical assault on the bus should not be allowed on the bus, again, with that student. That student should not have to change his or her routine in order to accommodate the racist child. That child has to accommodate his behavior, and that's the bare minimum of what should happen. I don't know what else you do with a racist kid like that, but it's not fair to make people of color bear the brunt of that kind of behavior and have to, you know, feel unsafe on a bus or in a classroom. So I do hope that people keep that in mind, that this is an attack not just on these individual students, but on whole groups of students, and they're not going to be safe in our district, and they won't feel safe in our district until we address this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Other public comment? Okay, would we move to approval of the minutes? Have a motion to approve the minutes from August 16th? Brian?
Move to approve the minutes from August 16th, 2017.
Moved by Brian. Is there a second now? Are there changes to the minutes? Hearing none? Okay. All those in favor approving the minutes, please raise your hand. Seven in favor. The minutes are approved. Announcements and accommodations and comments from the district? No? From the board? Denise?
Yes. I would like to say a thank you to Suzanne at the high school for the high school newsletter. We haven't had a high school newsletter, I don't think, for, as far as I'm aware. The PTO used to put something out, but it was just really nice to get something with all the dates of all the different things and kind of some general information and that sort of thing. So I just very much appreciated that.
Thank you, Denise. Brian?
Got the opportunity to go to the open house at the Massway before school started, and not surprisingly, the hit wasn't the classrooms, it was the playground, the new playground. So I think you got a thumbs up from all the kids. They really, really enjoyed it. And the teachers did a great job. I believe they did a video, a safety video, to show all the kids, which I think was very thoughtful and helpful, rather than just send them up there and see who gets hurt. But nobody got hurt. So it was great. Also, the week before school started, it was a great gift by the ORYA football program. There was big mounds of mulch that needed to be spread. Instead of practicing one night, they went in there and all the kids, instead of practicing that night, went in and spread all the mulch in the new playground and made a huge difference because those were some pretty big mounds of mulch. So it took a couple hours, but in lieu of practice. So I wanted to reach out and just thank ORYA for that nice gift.
Thank you, Brian. Al?
Last week, I went to the middle school, and I don't know how to kind of sum it up. It's kind of like middle school day. And it was Jaclyn Braun, who's the green team leader for the middle school, had an activity there where they collected all of the trash, and then they were sorted to see what was recyclable out of what was left. And what's kind of amazing about the middle school, you know they're doing a good job when they, first of all, they had to collect three days' worth of trash to actually run the program, and they were worried about running out of trash in the program. That said, when the kids sorted it, really, you looked at what was there, and the low-hanging fruit, things like aluminum, weren't there, but there's still a lot of paper there, so it could be reduced. So I thought that was, that was pretty cool. And even cooler, as they were doing the sorting, there's a girl from the middle school who won an essay contest, and lo and behold, where the hair, where there, this group from NASCAR brought like a NASCAR pace car out to the back of the middle school and fired it up, and the student was able to get the picture taken, and it was, it was really pretty cool. So it was kind of a microcosm of all the stuff that was going on at the middle school, and I thought that was really interesting. And then my only other comment, I know that Jim, you're probably during your thing going to address the incidents at the, at the school, and I think, you know, I'd like to comment, and I guess it's probably best just to wait till you've had your say.
Okay. Kenny?
And just on the heels of what Al said, I do want to say something. I wanted to thank the people for their public comments that they made tonight. This episode, episodes have really shaken me to my core. I do think that our district will be responding very, very appropriately to what I agree we shouldn't look at as one-off incidents, but I think this is a community issue. We had a community issue regarding a big fight that had occurred once. This is a whole other issue, but to me, incredibly serious. I think it is representative of what's going on in our country to some extent, and I think that, not speaking for the board, speaking for myself, I think that we'll make the Oyster River Community School District community proud for the way we handle this, and I think use this as a tremendous opportunity for education, learning, and building relationships. Saying that, shifting gears completely, I'm inspired walking into this building on Wednesdays and watching people of my generation, maybe older, playing a game called Pickleball that I never knew about, but I think it's really cool we opened the school to that. I think it comes from Durham's Parks and Rec, and it's inspiring. And the last thing is how unique it is that we have a board here, a school board, who our chair is really a well-recognized, renowned figure in education. And Tom Newkirk has just published another book with the main title Embarrassing, which again focuses on education, and how lucky we are to have such an esteemed figure in education who's leading our group. So I want to...
Thank you, thank you. The book is called Embarrassment because that's been the story of my life, so. I'd just like to also comment upon the incidents that occurred, not specifically what happened or what we're going to do, but just the sense that I think it's possible in a community like this to think we've been, because we live here, we're somehow vaccinated or immunized from race and racism, and we're not. And to think that it happens at other times in our history, it happens in other places, it happens to other people, and not to think that we, you know, it affects us, and we are, we have to examine ourselves. And I hope that what comes out of this is a serious self-examination and looking at race, not as something that happened in the 1960s and Ferguson, but something that can happen here. So I hope that something good can come out of this, and I think it will. Other comments? Okay. District reports, Assistant Superintendent?
Thank you. I did want to, before I get into my report, just follow up on something that Tom talked about at the beginning. Former Oyster River Superintendent John Powers passed away September 2nd. I had the privilege and honor of working with him. In fact, he was the superintendent that hired me 33 years ago to work in this really special school district. The things that John really brought to this school district was, as Tom said, a sense of faculty and staff empowerment, and he really valued the professionals he brought in and really encouraged those professionals to really think reflectively and actively, and encourage people to take risks in the interest of trying to find ways to do things better. And I really feel that he helped create a culture of learners in our professional staff that also passed that on to our students that is incredibly positive. As Tom said, he brought the concept of individualized instruction, he brought the concept of heterogeneous, heterogenous grouping, he brought the concept of the choice-based model here at the high school. He introduced our district to the middle school concept. When he started, middle school was a new thing, and people weren't doing it. But I guess the thing that I take so much from John's leadership was just the culture of teachers that he created, and to this day, I really think our teachers feel very much like the work they do makes a difference. If they see something that they need to address, they feel very confident that if they speak up and are willing to take charge of something, they can really influence things. And again, relating that to some of the topics that people are talking about, having gone around the district and had many conversations with our district educators, you need to know how passionately and strongly our educators feel about this kind of stuff, and I, they are going to tackle this along with the leadership and along with the community in a very aggressive and passionate way. Moving to my, moving away from John Powers and his influence in the district and talking about kind of things that have been accomplished this summer, I did want to kind of let you know that, kind of in the spirit of John Powers, I guess you could say, there was a tremendous amount of professional development done this summer in the interest of improving many of the programs that we have. I won't bore you with the entire list, but we had 400 days' worth of professional development committed to by our staff this summer. Out of that came tremendous efforts, efforts around our math programs at both the, all three levels, elementary, middle, and high. A lot of work around STEM education at multiple levels, significant work around literacy, some social-emotional learning, professional development, lots of things that we will be seeing real, real influence of. And so I'm really proud of the work that our staff has done this summer, and I hope you'll be seeing a lot of the influences of that in the coming months. So thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent, sir.
I do want to talk about the incident of racism in the district, but before I get there, I want to recognize a group of individuals who have really stepped forward this particular school year. So I'd invite Lisa and Richard and Melody to the podium. So as the board knows, and as the community knows, as we started this school year, we actually started this school year with five less drivers than we would need to be at full complement. And our bus drivers across the board have stepped up to the task, and even though we are, we started with five less, and as of today, we're four less than full complement, our drivers have been really amazing. The first day of school was a typical first day of school, kids getting on the wrong bus, kids anxious, drivers trying to figure out their routes, new students on their routes trying to make sure that they're, making sure those kids get home. And it was a rough first day. That is typical for every school year, because when kids move in and kids move out, the drivers have to re-acclimate themselves to the routes. The second day, we didn't have any missteps, and we really started to work on efficiency adjustments in the routes. And the drivers, again, stepped in, have been fantastic working through these issues. So what happened on the second day typically takes us about two weeks to get through, and the drivers really have been quite amazing. And to not recognize them this year would be a travesty because they really have stepped up. Which, you know, I do not want to say that we are running the system the way we would want to run it. Without those four drivers at this point, the actual time on the bus isn't necessarily a problem, but the total wait time at a school and the bus drive is a bit of a problem at the Massway end of the system. And so as Lisa brings on new drivers, we'll be able to correct that. That is, that probably is our hotspot. And then the pep program, which is run by a van, is running a little bit later than we would want it to run, and that's because the person who normally drives the van is now driving a bus, because that's where we needed them. But those are the obstacles that will be fixed with appropriate staffing. Tonight, I wanted to thank the drivers, and I will walk up there and give this to them. Did you introduce these guys?
I did not. I have Mr. Richard, bus 29, and I have with me here Ms. Melody, van 15, bus 32, whatever we put her in. She's very flexible like that.
So Lisa, I'm going to give this to the drivers, if you don't mind. Richard and Melody, please share our school department's appreciation for all the hard work and the suggestions you've made to us to try to make sure this year is going as efficiently as we possibly can, short of the drivers that we need to complete the fleet. Really a heartfelt appreciation of all the work you guys did this year. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's it?
Thank you.
Could I just, could I just add that not only were you short drivers, but you had a whole new bus system to accommodate the start time, which I know was an enormous burden that we placed upon you and the drivers. And we're very concerned that the whole issue of start time might be put into jeopardy or question because of just the difficulty of the transportation, but I think you folks handled that amazingly well, and I think the issue of the later start time got off to a good start.
It really did. We have a very great group of drivers. We have a nice team.
And I think that flexibility and then creativity to figure out, and you know, that goes administration, you, the drivers, I think that I just have such deep appreciation for your, your being able to do that.
Thank you.
Kenny?
And just, I believe it was brought up at the last meeting, I was not here, but I think it's important to reiterate to people maybe watching that the problem of bus shortage, bus driver shortages is far from unique in our district, and actually, we're doing much better, and other districts are extremely short of drivers. I know Northwood even had changes in school schedule and opening based on that, and thank you to our drivers who are as committed to us as we are, as we are committed to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kenny. Just to give you a sense of Northwood's situation, they're starting school after 10:00, and they're ending school after 4:00, because they are relying on neighboring school systems to transport their kids, so they had to create a whole new schedule for their elementary school in order to accommodate the bankruptcy of their bus vendor. And so, you know, the situation, as Kenny alludes to, is happening across our state and across our country, and it really behooves us to make sure that we appreciate the people who do work for us, so that they can spread the word that this is a great place to work, because they'll be our best recruiters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
So, you know, let me get to the issue that has already been discussed in public comment. There is no room for racism, sexism, religious bigotry. There is no room for that kind of behavior in our district. And this particular issue at my level was pretty shocking. And as Carrie Vase, who was the person who started the investigation, knows, this takes tens of hours to investigate. There are many students who need to be talked to over a course of days, getting permission from parents to follow through, and ultimately staying in close contact to the families that were impacted directly. And I want to say that Carrie did a great job doing that, and I also want to say that I was not out of contact with either family for the past week, and I had been in daily contact. Our district prides itself on inclusiveness, and so as a note, we were the first district in the state to pass a transgender policy because we wanted those students to feel comfortable and safe. We want all of our students, students of color, to be safe. We want our students who have a different sexual orientation to be safe. We want people who have different religions to feel safe. And all of that is verbiage in our policy, so to see this particular incident happen in our district was more than disconcerting. I immediately reached out to organizations that I thought would be of great help to us, and I have been working with them diligently, and we are going to be formulating a public forum around this issue, because this is an issue that's bigger than our school system. Schools are microcosms of the communities they live in. And, you know, I happened to be invited to the event on Monday night at UNH, and I was, quite frankly, shocked by what I heard on campus by our students of color, that the experiences they've had at the campus last spring were multiple and horrific, and to have any of that trickle down into our school system is unacceptable. So I can tell you that we have met administratively, and we've gone through issues that the principals were dealing with at their level, because we run a somewhat... were dealing with at their level because we run a somewhat decentralized system when it comes to discipline issues. This one is now going to become a central office issue. We talked through the various issues that they have seen happen, heard happen, have had reported happen. And we'll be putting procedures in place to ensure that there's a process for that reporting. I heard from a number of parents over the course of today that they should have been told before the newspaper. We were heavily involved in due process in investigating not just the victim, but the child who perpetrated the issue. And we cannot ignore that both families have due process rights, which we have duly executed. We will continue to address this issue. The age of the students does have an impact. This is a teachable age and we will institute programs over the course of this year to make sure that all of our students from pre-K through high school will get a good dose of diversity training inside the curriculum by our teachers. So we're going to start there and provide training for our teachers. This issue cannot stand. This is not something that we can sweep under the rug, nor should we. This is Oyster River. We have a tradition of facing our problems head-on and we will face this problem head-on. The newspaper accurately reported that I'd been meeting with these organizations to try to figure out how best to educate our faculty and how best to have a conversation with our communities. The timeline for that is contingent on my continued conversations. I will be reporting that out to parents and citizens of our three communities because even though this happened between two very young students, it has implications for who we see as ourselves in the town of Durham, Lee and Medbury. So it's not just a school issue. We need to engage the entire community. So although I know people would want us to communicate directly to them, we hadn't even finished our conversations with the families involved, which is why there was no communication because I have to protect the privacy of both families. I have no option other than do that under FERPA. But we will use this issue to recommit and re-educate our faculty, to create a system where this will not happen. So that's my report for the public related to this issue. I'd answer any questions the board may have.
No?
I just have a comment about it. You know, I think my worry right now is that our focus is strictly on the incident that occurred at Oyster River. And I think that's a mistake. As Jim alluded to, there's been racial incidents occurring at UNH last spring. The town of Durham has been engaged in a debate over a mural in the post office that was put up in 1959 that Native Americans find offensive. And now we find ourselves with an incident occurring at Oyster River. So it's not just an Oyster River problem, it's our community problem. And so as we focus in on training or trying to protect Oyster River, that's not going to, I don't know how that's a viable option. I think that we need to have a solution that encompasses all of our community. And, you know, it's amazing, you know, forethought. Kristin Facilius, who is the Education Director at Durham Community Church, approached me last summer. I've done a lot of work and my other head is a Durham Town Councilor with economic development. And she said to me that she was going to have this program starting next January, which is called Durham Reads. And the Durham Reads program was, she said, "We have to have an intelligent conversation about race." It's a difficult conversation, but it's one that our community as a whole has to have. And so Durham Reads, a grabbed little thing, it's like, she was handing out, and she of course gave me a copy of the book, it's called Waking Up White by, I can't quite read, I'm sorry Michael, it's not that good. But anyway, that would be the book that she's having the entire community read, including the university, hopefully the school system and others, and have that as a starting point for a dialogue of, I think, six weeks' worth of activities dealing with race. And I think that it would be a really good idea for us as a district to embrace that. I think, again, as we talk about training, I mean, the school is a reflection of our community. If these things are occurring in our community, to think that we can just have training here that that's going to solve our problem, it's not. And I think that it's incumbent upon us to really reach out in a systematic way in our community. So that's my two cents.
And so, are there questions for Jim?
I just want to voice strong support for this initiative. We'll do anything I can to, I'll do anything I can to this initiative.
The church has reached out to the high school and middle school. They did it this summer and both principals have made a commitment to participating.
Okay, are there questions?
There are several specific points in the nondiscrimination and equal opportunity policy that I was hoping that you could clarify about how they're implemented. Specifically, the continuing program designed to prevent discrimination and the procedures for resolving complaints of discrimination under this policy.
So historically, any issues that have arisen have been addressed by the principals. This instance really has brought the issue to my office. And so specifically, what I've been doing is working with the family continuously through this last two weeks. And so that's the procedure we're using from this point on. When any issue of racism comes up, it'll be addressed through my office because what we learned from the principals is they were dealing with individual issues, but because they are four different schools, they weren't necessarily connecting the issues. And through our conversation this week, we realized that we were all dealing with very similar issues but not talking to each other. And so historically, that's been an effective model for Oyster River. I think on this issue, it's not an effective model for Oyster River and we need to centralize any issues related to racism. What's the next one, Michael?
The continuing program designed to prevent discrimination.
Sure. So again, historically, it's been embedded in the curriculum and through our counselors, through our social studies departments. But like we discovered four years ago with math, if there wasn't a centralized approach, then what was happening was based on the interest of an individual teacher. That can't happen any longer either. We need to make sure that we have a systematic approach in place to ensure that this curriculum is addressed in every grade through the system.
I'm just wondering, since it was raised about the policy, the nondiscrimination, equal opportunity policy, which is Policy AC, we had put it on later in the agenda, but today at Policy Committee, we looked at it and we were hoping to get the board's authority to review this policy and related policies that deal with such behaviors in our schools. So maybe this would be a time I'll just move for approval that Policy Committee takes on this task. And of course, we will report back to the board as we do our homework.
So is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second? Yeah. I think this is absolutely essential that we do this.
That the board authorizes the Policy Committee to examine Policy AC and related policies and bring back recommendations to the school board for any enhancements or improvements.
Discussion then, Dan?
Second. Was there a second? Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we have a second, so. A ready vote? All in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor that the Policy Committee's authorized to review those policies.
So if I can continue my report in terms of enrollment, and remember the official enrollment date is October 1st, so until October 1st, these are unofficial numbers. So our two elementary schools, Massway opened with 354 students and Mohairamet opened with 345 students. So in my tenure as superintendent, this is the first time that Massway has had a larger student population than Mohairamet. Within the elementary schools, I would point the school board towards the class sizes in fourth grade at both schools. That's our pressure point in both schools. Both of them are in the 23-plus range. And there's not much we can do about that in terms of interjection because we just simply don't have any classrooms to, space to add teachers. And our principals in both schools are working with those grades to try to figure out ways that they can help mitigate the class sizes by scheduling specials and so forth. But it is a real problem for us because it does exceed our policy by one student per class. And then if we look at the middle school, we are at 661 students. The school was supposed to be smaller this year. Clearly, it's not. And our high school opened with 794 students. I believe that means that our high school principal owes me a lobster roll because she was saying that it was going to open with over 800. So I'm waiting Suzanne. So, and then the PEP program is anticipated to be around 40 students. So again, you know, this is the fifth year of growth for the district. I think in total, we may be over the 2,200 enrollment figure. The largest enrollment the district had was 2,400. I get that information from Sue because she knew it and I didn't because I wasn't here and probably she was close enough as business manager in Newmarket and resident of Durham that she would know that. So, you know, if you looked at the projections from five years ago, two things are happening. One is the Barrington tuition agreement has really stabilized our high school enrollment. There's 140 Barrington students in the high school, projected to be almost 160 next year. And that has allowed us to meet two goals that we had when we entered into the agreement, which was, one, to make sure that we offered a diverse curriculum at the high school, not lose programming due to loss of student population. The very first year I was here, we were actually laying off high school teachers in the first budget that we put together. Now, of course, as we've gone through the last three budgets, we've incrementally increased staffing and expanded programming, and that was the second goal. The third goal was to try to use as much of the money that we get from Barrington to offset the taxes in our member towns, and we've been very successful at that as well. So the amazing change is Massway. The town of Lee has provided more students to us than anybody had anticipated. I would point out that the Long Range Planning Committee does do an excellent job and they have a pretty accurate handle on the total number of elementary students. What they can't predict is which school is going to be impacted by growth. I also would point out that the Mohairamet School is still getting smaller. And if you recall, for those of you who have been on the board, 345 this year compared to 417 five years ago. So that's good news because that building is becoming closer to its size capacity. The implications for Massway is during budget season, we'll need to think about how we want to approach solutions in terms of growth there. Because this is the third year in a row that we've seen growth in Lee at the Massway School. And then the other piece that I'd wanted to point out tonight is we did baseline survey data on start time last May, and I'm going to invite Todd up to the podium, wherever he is, Todd, just to talk about.
Well, that's later, right?
Oh, it's on the agenda.
Jesse Morell will talk about that a little bit.
Okay. We'll skip that for a agenda item then, sorry. That concludes my report. Mrs. Shear?
But we had like the Facilities Committee, but we.
Correct.
Right?
Yeah, the superintendent's Facilities Committee met for the first time. Almost everybody was there. It was a great conversation. We presented all the options that we could possibly think of and we gave them tours of the facility so they'd have an understanding of what Jay and his staff face. And we'll continue to meet with that group now monthly. And those agendas are posted and the minutes are posted so that anybody is welcome to come in and watch the process and get a sense of the work. But we are beginning the process by looking at our current middle school and its deficiencies. Then we'll be looking at options like K through eight schools, six through 12 schools, building a new school, building a new school someplace else other than Code Drive. There's just a litany of options and we'll be continuing to investigate and discuss those options all the way through June. And what we're hoping is that the committee will, at the end of this school year, be in a position to recommend a solution to the school board for its consideration and then carry that solution forward for the next couple of years as we talk to the community about how we might address an aging facility that does not currently work well as an educational institution.
Just to add to that, the commentary piece that I wrote about the middle school facility appeared in Foster's and appeared in Durham Updates and I think it's getting some circulation. So it was my effort to try to, just to get the basic facts of the BLAT report and the kind of cost that we face coming forward, you know, in terms of maintaining the middle school facility, just to get that word out. So that's a part of a help community awareness that we've accomplished.
I just wanted to go back to enrollment and I echo what Dr. Moore said about the Long Range Planning Committee. And I certainly don't know how you crack that nut and how you really come up with a great model. But I wanted to point out an area of concern for me is you're right with total enrollment and we do the numbers, it looks pretty close. So just looking at elementary, we had 699 kids and long-range planning had an estimate of 659, which is off a little, but ballpark. But if we just look at kindergarten and grade one, we have 255 kids, long-range planning only 217. And using the progressions, I think, as we go from first to second to third, things become more predictable. So I don't know if there's a solution, but the discrepancy is very front-loaded. And that is going to mean a lot for our middle school project as we try to project enrollment and how we are figured as a district. So I just raised that concern without a solution.
Sure. And that's an issue that when they do their report, and when Lisa does the report annually, is always saying that the hardest grades for them to work with are those primary grades.
Denise?
I actually was going to bring that up at the committee report because long-range planning did meet. So do you want me to hold off and or talk about it now, as long as we're talking about it?
Makes sense to go ahead.
Why don't you go ahead?
All right. So, and you're right about the kindergarten first grade. I'm a little bit, I'd have to look at those numbers because for the total to be off, it sounds a little bit, it doesn't sound quite right that the total numbers were off that much. But anyway, kindergarten in first grade and the greatest difficulty in our district is because of the number of move-ins. So if you look strictly at birth rates, the birth rate is going down. It's going down across the state, across the region, and even right here in our community, it's going down. The problem is that our district doesn't just feed off births. We have move-ins, lots of move-ins. And that's what makes it so difficult to project. And the other thing, the reason kindergarten was so far off this year was because of the full day. And so the long-range planning had to use a different mythology, methodology, thank you, not mythology, not that, to come up with an S- thank you, not mythology, not that, to come up with an estimate because, or projection, because we had never had the full day before. So going forward, now that we have a baseline, it should be a little bit easier and a, and a little bit more accurate, at least, I think, for first grade, because first grade is just going to be sort of a progression. Previously, they had to do different formulas for kindergarten and first grade, because a lot of students went to private kindergartens and then came in first grade. So the first grade numbers should actually get a lot more accurate going forward because of that. One of the things the Long Range Planning Committee tried to do is to find another independent variable, separate from number of births, that would help predict the number of students that we have in our district. And so, Michael Goldberg did a lot of work, actually trying to see if employment level, if could- And unfortunately, it wasn't. He tried a lot of different ways to see if there was, you know, any correlation, and nothing came of it. Unfortunately, real estate sales data does not go back far enough to be of value, to be able to see if that would be something that the Long Range Planning Committee could use. So, I mean, the bottom line is, the committee is certainly aware of sort of the weaknesses in the models, and is constantly trying to update the models, to make them more accurate. And every year, they look at, you know, how close they were, and they, believe me, it's like way over my head. It's, it really is. We've got some really, really smart people on that committee. But, like I say, that the going-forward first grade should get better in terms of total number of students, definitely. Kindergarten is still going to be tough. But I am a little bit nervous about assuming that we're going to continue to increase in enrollment, because, and I, I know it's been three years now, but, again, birth rates are going down. A lot of this growth has been fueled by, we were first in the recession and then the growth, and there was sort of pent-up demand and all of that. I'm not sure it's accurate to assume that that's going to continue, and this is just me talking, it's not the committee, but just me. I think at some point, we can expect another plateau. So I, it is difficult, it is difficult. But I will say, I've enjoyed being on this committee. It really is very interesting to hear what everybody has to say, and I know that we have a lot of really hard-working people, and we're fortunate to have them, too. The last thing I'll say about it that goes back to the middle school, Rob McEwen, who is on the Middle School Facilities Committee, did this, tons of work to check out different school configurations across New Hampshire and the country. And very interestingly, for a 5-8 school, only 24% of schools in New Hampshire have that configuration, compared to 6-8, for 49% for 6-8. So a lot more schools have that 6-8 configuration, and that's, that's New Hampshire, and then it's even more so nationally. But, like I say, we have, we definitely have people that know statistics and numbers and all that good stuff on the committee.
Thank you, Denise. I wonder if you moved to budget update? Sue?
So, since you have the DOE 25 and the MS 25 on the agenda, I just thought I would share with you the regular format that I usually give you for year-end, with the same columns that we, I present throughout the year. If you have any questions about the difference where, where everything fell out at the end of the year? It leaves us with a balance, a fund balance of about 200, actually 280,000. There's another, there's an impact from another fund that impacts the fund balance, but for the general fund, we're looking at 264, which is lower than we expected.
Oh, that's what was my question.
Yes.
Which is lower than we expected?
Yes, and-
By how much?
We expected 4, well, we projected 450, moving forward, and we talked about utilizing some of the trust funds and the emergency fund when tax rate-setting time comes. So that's just around the corner. Waiting now to hear from the towns, to see what their assessed value is. That impacts the rate, so until I have that, I really can't say. Thinking somewhere around 300, 350, we're going to need to be obligated to use to be within the range that we projected when we set, when we presented our budget, so.
So we'd have to go into the trust funds?
Right, for that amount, correct. I will come back to you, first meeting in October, with that figure.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So is that, is it more than what we thought we were going to have to tap into?
Yeah, a little bit more. It is a little bit more. I think somewhere around 260 was our production. We were going to use 260 to make things balance.
And now you're saying more like 3?
350. Looking like 350. But stay tuned, when the assessments come in, I may be able to adjust it. We also have to, we get an adequacy update October 1st, so that sometimes will change things, and we may not have to use as much.
Okay.
Surprises, the, both on the positive side and the negative side.
Well, I think on the negative side, we've always had quite a surplus in the special ed. And as you recall, we had a number of move-ins in the special ed department. We had a boiler that we had to replace, so our facilities budget was really maxed out. And then, just in general, trying to think of big-ticket items, not a lot. You can see down the line, I'm just looking through to see which ones, if anything jumps out at me, but it's just one of those years where a lot of things happened all at the same time in the wrong direction, unfortunately.
Our workers' comp-
That was another one, yes.
Was one in-
Right. What had happened there is, we typically budget for the full amount, and we've been getting premium holidays. And the one year, we decide, let's just budget for a premium holiday, we didn't get it. So now we're budgeting for the full amount, so we should have kept with that practice. So that was far more than, than we expected. Other questions?
Other questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Hey, Jesse? Third time? Thank you for waiting, sorry to keep you so long.
Did you want to do the Student Senate?
Hi there.
What?
Going to the Student Senate.
I'm sorry, Student Senate.
Excellent.
Almost, Jenny.
Almost, yeah, yeah. Sorry, Hannah.
So, the school year has just started, so not too much has been happening, but the Senate's been working tirelessly to plan Spirit Week, which will be the week of the 25th. We've been working on planning out the class colors and the day themes, and Field Day will be on the 29th for the high school students. And Mr. Bobcat is the senior class talent show, which, if you haven't been before, it is always very funny. It's a bunch of senior boys doing talents on stage, which is entertaining, and that's on the 28th in the auditorium, and you'll help be supporting the senior class. And students have been adjusting to the new start times. There's been lots of good opinions, lots of bad opinions. The schedule is a little confusing, but we'll hope that we'll all get used to it, because that's what we do. Thank you.
Okay, now.
My name is Jesse Stabile Morrell, and I'm a member of the Wellness Committee, the District Wellness Committee, which, if you don't know the committee, it's made up of administrators, nurses, teachers. We had a wonderful student rep last year, who Hannah Jane knows well, and we've been meeting for years, working on things like the wellness policy. This particular year came, one of the goals was to develop a survey, which was really, the goal was to gather feedback about student experiences and lifestyle habits related to wellness, kind of broadly. At the same time, the start time change was announced, or became more, we became more aware of it, I guess. And so, although our survey was designed to address general wellness, lots of questions related to screen time, stress management, general well-being, sleep certainly kind of got elevated in terms of sleep behaviors as we were developing the survey. We developed a 41-item survey, looking at a lot of different examples. We chose validated questions from surveys already out there in the literature. We pushed forward to do the survey in the spring of 2018, 2017, so that we could evaluate, perhaps, a post-survey, do a survey in the spring of 2018, and really look at difference between students' responses related to wellness and sleep behaviors before the start time change and after. Because right now, as you mentioned, there's a lot of opinions, a lot of thoughts about this, but maybe if we survey students before they really notice, or really think about it, we might be able to see some, or detect differences, or maybe we won't see differences in, in students' reported wellness. So I'm not sure how much detail you want me to go into this. This is something that we have baseline data on this 41-item survey, and we plan to redo it in the spring of 2018 and look at differences. About 40% or so of 7th-12th graders completed the survey. They did it anonymously, via laptops, tablets, smartphones in the high school in particular. I have to give a shout-out to Eileen Moran, who did a terrific job collecting data from the 7th and 8th graders. She can work with me collecting data any day, because she made sure she got great results from those 7th and 8th graders, so we had good, good, good data there. To highlight a few results, is that some, what you want, to talk about? About, I would say more than half of, or I should say 56, more than half of the students report that they were getting too little sleep. Again, this, these results are for 7th-12th graders, representing about 583 students, so a pretty good response rate. We would, the researcher and me, like that response rate. About a third of the students felt like they were getting enough sleep. So we had more than half saying they're getting too little, and about a third saying they get enough. The most common bedtime was about 10 o'clock, 10:00 to 10:30. About one-third of our students go to bed past 11 o'clock. 32% of our students report getting, on average, seven hours of sleep per day. That was the most common, about seven hours a day. But only 20% report getting nine hours or more, and that's what's recommended for this age range. So only about 1 in 5 are actually meeting the recommended hours of sleep. Again, these are, I should make, it's not evident in my reporting here, because I'm a little bit nervous, but this is obviously self-reported data from these students, their perceptions and their, of their behaviors. Most students report getting up about 6:00 or 6:30. 22% of students report getting up earlier than 6:00 AM. I was very excited to see that about 2/3 of the students report regularly eating breakfast, as I am, my background is in nutrition, so I was very happy about that. About, about a third of the students report infrequently eating breakfast, so we're going to work on, I would love for them to eat breakfast. Let's see. I thought it was interesting that only 1/3 of the students report taking the bus to school. Another 3 are driven by family members, and about 20%, 21% either drive themselves or are driven with friends. 70% of students report their commute to school taking 20 minutes or less. 13% report the morning commute taking more than 30 minutes. And then, in terms of stress management, one last thing to mention, 43% felt they were managing their stress well, and but 15% report rarely or never managing stress well. So again, that's just sort of a highlight, snapshot of some of the results. Can give you a lot of data, if you're interested in that. We haven't, as a committee, met this school year. So the survey was done late May, and we haven't gotten together as a committee to discuss and disseminate the results, maybe in ways that are helpful to teachers and the administration. So for example, breaking it down by 7th and 8th graders compared to freshmen, compared to older students, may be more appropriate and more useful. And so this, this preliminary snapshot hasn't been worked through yet by the committee. Our plan is to re-administer the survey in May of 2018 and compare the findings pre- and post. We think we have a unique opportunity to look at the response of students after the start time, after a significant time has gone by, in a, in a same season of the, you know, season of the year, same timeframe.
Could I ask you, what, what surprised you? I mean, did things fall, you know, just in terms of your own gut feeling about what you felt?
So my area is young adult health, and I work with 18-year-olds and 19-year-olds, and there were a lot of similarities that I saw. The stress management was pretty, pretty typical. I think, I was surprised, actually, that some of them eat breakfast. That's something that we see drop off when they get older, so I was happy to see that. I think so few of them taking the school bus was also surprising to me, but that's just, some of this is my own perception. I think it'll be very interesting to see the sleep times. Those sleep times seem pretty typical, seven to nine hours for, for school-age, you know, young, this is what we see in the literature, so it wasn't, didn't surprise me as different, but it'll be interesting, interesting to see the effect of the change of start time, if it will significantly alter their reports of how many hours they're getting at night.
Denise?
I have two questions. The first was, because I printed out the survey, and on the, what time do you usually go to bed on a school day? It looked on here like the, the latest was 10:30, so that wasn't-
So this was administered via, on, either a computerized version or a smartphone, and the printed version didn't display all the options that you could pull down.
Okay, as long as they were able, that's what I assumed, but I just kind of-
Sure, no, it's a, it's a good question.
And then, as far as additional data, I'm curious about the medication, like, how many, what percent said that they take any kind of medication to help with sleep, so maybe that might-
It was pretty small. I don't know, I don't remember it off the top of my head, but my recollection, it was pretty small.
Yeah, so, but, thank you.
Sure.
Was there anything about cellphone use at night?
We did ask some screen time questions. For example, I think the question was worded, how often they used a computer or a smartphone that did not involve homework, you know, how many hours. And as you can predict, it was a wide range. It was pretty impressive, the number of students who were on their, who were self-reported using their phone or a computer for upwards six, seven hours a day.
Mm-hmm.
For sure.
Other questions?
I have one, just a comment, and I know this drives like a researcher, and you're crazy, one person says their comment, but, you know, in my, you know, limited start-time change thought, to me, right now, and I haven't had long enough or enough people, but it doesn't seem like the amount of sleep necessarily changed so much. It's how the morning has changed, is the bigger part. It used to always be, it's more leisurely how, you know, my daughter gets up and kind of eases into the day, and gets out to the bus, as opposed to what it used to be. So it, it changes how the start of the day really is mentally, how you prepare for it. So I think it'd be kind of interesting to see, you know, when you do the survey in the spring, to see if you can kind of capture some of that.
Sure, I mean, I think there's some, some of the survey questions that I didn't get into, really talk about quality of sleep and fatigue and reported behaviors such as falling asleep in the middle of the day, those kinds of questions that maybe would answer that. I think it is also very important to see what it's going to be like a year from now, or a year, I'm sorry, a year from May, a year later. Because right now, it is such a new thing, such a change. It's also week three, maybe, so we're still having that adjustment phase that would happen every, every school year to some degree. So it's very, from, the researcher and me is very excited to look at this, but it's still preliminary data, so.
So when is the repeat survey planned?
So if we can match it up pretty closely, it'd be May, May, second half of May, 2018, to be a year later. We, one thing we, you know, worked, we were very, we tried our best to be very respectful of the feedback we were getting from the administration and the teachers. There was a lot of assessment going on in the spring. We kind of wanted to do it a little bit earlier, but they have many rounds of testing, whether it's standardized testing, like AP tests, or there was the YRBS survey, the Smart Balance Testing, so we were trying to avoid an over-testing environment. So we moved it down to, you know, we didn't want to get too close into June, when it becomes a different environment in the schools, am I right? So ideally, it would be the same timeframe.
Yeah, I guess my, my concern about it is that if the intent is to use the follow-up data to reflect on the impact of start times and then adjust accordingly, that doesn't give us enough time to- give us enough time to do anything for the school year that starts that fall. And there may be value in trying to do that earlier in the school year so that we have that data sooner.
I would think that we wouldn't have time to do it even, even if it was like February, that wouldn't give us, you know, to change start time back, you know, in that spring. That would be really tough.
I think our intent by the survey was to make adjustments as we see it, not to whole, not to re-change the whole thing one more time, because I think that would be disruptive to the system, but to use the information that Jesse's collecting and the wellness team is collecting to inform what adjustments will make it better.
And in all honesty, the original survey design was just to be informative, as it was, without the pre- and post, just that this information is helpful to us even now. So this was sort of a window of opportunity to do it pre- and post.
Kenny?
I would think it's very important to do the testing the same time of the year, because I think all of us are affected by length of day and length of night, and I think people in general are more energized May, June, July with the long days, and people are more hibernating February, December, January. So I think the consistency, I get your point, Michael, and I understand that, but I think the only way we could really interpret it is by having our environment the same.
Yeah, but for, for the students too, especially at the high school, the difference in the after-school activities and things like that would, would potentially be a confounder to interpreting the results. So it would certainly make sense to match it up. The other thing was, we were trying to separate out the test, the survey dates so that the students themselves didn't become too complacent to the survey. I'm going to just kind of check through the survey.
Well, thank you so much. We look forward to the results of the second survey.
Okay, have a good night, thank you.
Thanks a lot. Okay, Sue, we have a form to sign.
Yeah, so the end of the year, we have two forms, one for the Department of Revenue and one for the Department of Education, and it just takes all of the data from all of our expenditures and puts it on those forms in a sometimes confusing format, but it actually ultimately gets us our tax rate and cost per pupil. So I'll just bring it up.
Yep. So we take, have a motion to sign these, is that, or, okay. Denise?
I'll make a motion to sign the MS-25 and the DOE-25.
Moved by Denise, is her second? Second by Michael? Discussion, all those in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, seven in favor? Motion passes. So where are the forms? Right here?
Sue, do you want to take the second form and start it at a different point and just walk it across the table?
Form's not first.
Oh, okay. So you need to sign first.
Right here?
You've got a special case.
Ah. Special. So is it just one signature for each form? Okay, why don't I pass this around, then? Brian, you take it around, okay? Okay, we'll start these around, then when it comes to you, Denise, they'll all have all been signed. Okay, so if we can kind of continue business while this is going around, is that all right? You'll have in your folder a version of the, would this be fiscal year 2019? Is that the way it would work?
The basis?
Is that?
Yes, it's 1819, so use the...
They call it 19? Yeah. Okay. You have a draft, like what we had previously was just what was done the previous year, and based on the kind of conversations we had, it seemed to me that we could take maybe a little step beyond that, and what I tried to do is to capture some of the ideas that came up in the discussion we've had previously. So I wonder, you probably, I don't, you probably haven't had a chance even to look at it, if you take like maybe a minute or two to read through it, and I'm wondering if we could maybe just use this as a starting document. We don't have to approve anything tonight. I think we have to approve something the next meeting, the first meeting in October. But if people could look through this and see if this is getting close to what we might consider as a workable budget goal. So is that all right? People take, take a couple minutes to read through it? Yeah? year, I think we anticipated, given how tough that year was with the, all the retirement costs, we would have to dip in to the retirement, into the expendable funds, and it appears tonight we're going to have to dip in even $70,000 more, so it means the total that we're taking out of our expendable funds is like three, something like $350,000, so a very sizable amount. So the, the idea was that in the, this year, we'll pretty much keep the budget goal what it was last year, but with the goal of replenishing those funds. Now, when I put the $100,000, that was, that, we might want to increase that because, because, you know, we're, we've drained it down more than we thought. But, so that's kind of the big difference. The goal was the same, but the idea is, instead of going into the funds, we're going to try to replenish the funds, because if we don't do that, we're just going to pretty much not have much left, yeah. Al?
So I'm going to go by memory, and I seem to remember that last time you did it, what we, was non-negotiable, the things that were thrown in, I think it was about a 2.76% increase. So it's like, and I, first of all, I think that replenishing the funds is, is something we should do. And I mean, I, I think of all that we've done over the last five years, everything has been to try to provide stability and predictability so that you aren't starting and stopping programs. And you look at it, it's like, we lease the buses, we lease our computers, we have Siemens coming in now and looking at our buildings, and it, and I think, you know, Jim said it, I don't remember how long ago, it's taking the peaks and valleys out of the budget and adding predictability. And so in order to do that, we really do need those funds, and I know there may be a, we could make more money off it in some way, but again, it's the stability that provides us is essential. And I think that putting it in our budget goal is also a great idea. I just like it, I mean, I know we could dip into our unexpendited trust fund or unexpendited fund balance at the end, but you know, as Kenny and I sit on the other side, the town side as well, I think it's better off, just when we talk to our towns and we're upfront with them, like, we need to do this to provide stability to our funds, and we're going to take, you know, the $100,000 is part of our budget, it's built in. Everybody knows why we've done it. So I think, I think this is a really good one. My only thought would be is like, if we're going to make the goal 3.25%, if we could then take the 2.79%, add what, $100,000, what does that do to the total? What is, I don't know, $160,000 or $170,000 if we're trying to replace? I mean, just so we could have an idea what the additions look like coming up to a percentage, so it's acceptable, so that's the point.
And we're probably going to have, because we don't have the, the bus drivers, and that's, that's probably not going to be a 3% given the market for bus drivers, so. So I'm wondering, like, for the next meeting, if we would have, like, what, what would that 3.25% get us? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, would that, would that do it?
Yeah.
So that, that is, you know, so could you come with that for the next meeting?
Where does the 3.25% come from?
That's what it was, I mean, that was our goal last year, and the idea was that you basically have 2.79% to start, you know, pretty much committed, then you have, you're going to, you're going to then have $100,000 for, that you're going to put in the trust, you know, put in the expendable, you're going to have...
Negotiations with two units.
Negotiations, probably another $100,000. So it seemed to me that that's probably about where it's going to, where it's going to come to, and that, that in terms, that that's what it was last year, and the budget passed resoundingly last year, so in terms of the ask of the voters, it seems to be in a range where, where we could get support from the voters. So those would be two things that I had in mind.
Do we have a sense of, so we, I know we don't know what the valuations of the towns are yet, but do we have a sense of the additions to the valuation, not just assessments, but...
But we're waiting on the towns for that information, Michael.
So when I, when you look back at the, the regional consumer price index data going back for 10 years, it's been since 2008 that there was a CPI increase that was greater than 3.25%. In fact, for the last, last one, two, three, last year it was 2.5, and then before that, we've got a whole bunch of years of less than 2%. So I know that it's not convenient, but I don't think it's good to be in the habit of continuing to ask for 50% more than the CPI as our, as our budgetary increase each year.
So the issue that drives that, Michael, is health insurance. Health insurance is not growing at CPI, it's growing at, in some cases, 10 times that. I mean, last year, we came in at 10%, so that was 4% higher, higher than, four times higher than the CPI. So, you know, if you've come in with a figure that says it's going to be CPI, then you're going to automatically be cutting back programming, staff, or issues that have been important to the community. It literally will not, you will not be able to put a budget together without significant rollbacks in programming because of health insurance alone.
Our estimate, I think to kind of come to this figure, we're estimating 10% increase in healthcare, and it was higher, you know, the initial figure we had last year was 14%.
14, yep.
And so, given that kind of, I think this, I'm saying the same thing you're saying, given that increase in health costs to keep the, to keep it at 2% or 2.1% would be, you'd have to, I think, take it out of programs.
The other part, Michael, that plays into this is the fact that the state of New Hampshire over the last four years has shifted $1 million of retirement costs to the local, this local community. That's happened across the state. So when you apply an arbitrary, this is what the cost of living increases across the country, it doesn't factor in the fact that both federal and state government have passed costs on to us with, and then claim they haven't had tax increases. As an example, our Title I funds are about maybe 60% of where they were only three years ago. Our Title II funds are now down to the point where we used to carry three staff members in them, we now can only carry one staff member, because that's how much that account has gone down. So what's happening to systems across the country, but specifically to us, is that rollback by the federal and state government is having a direct impact on programming. So this board, when we had the conversation about the loss of Title I funds and the loss of Title II funds, decided that those positions were important to keep, and that would be our math tutor and our reading tutors at the elementary schools. This process has been going on for better than five years, you know, because Mohairat used to get Title I funds, they get zero, and now at Massway, they, the funding for these positions has gone from three positions to one. So these support positions have almost entirely been absorbed by the local budget. The cost shifts from the state around retirement absorbed 100% by the local taxpayer, and then the unpredictable costs related to health insurance. So, you know, I certainly have had many conversations with people about the issue of why can't we keep it to the cost of living increase, and those are the reasons why.
Well, I'm not necessarily saying that we need to keep it to the CPI. I'm not saying that we should have a, a tax cap, and I've lived in towns when they had tax caps in the past, and I don't think that's a good way to, to operate the people's business. However, when you look at consistently vastly exceeding the CPI, that becomes problematic. And, and that's where I think we need to, we need to stretch a little bit farther to figure out what really are necessary parts, what things have perhaps served their purpose as programs and are not necessarily things that need to continue, and, and where we can look for opportunities to, to give back to the community a little bit of what we're asking for in this $40 million a year.
Kenny?
I hear what you're saying, and, and certainly, as Al alluded, we deal with this at the town level, and we also think of people who might be on social security and what, looking maybe even beyond what CPI is, what the social security benefit has gone up for the years. And I think the conversation is a very worthy one. The way that I've looked at it, and we've talked about that fixed cost, we know that the budget contractual obligations, we're going to see that come in probably with this, if we're going to add to the stabilization, we're going to come in at 2.8 at least. We talk about wanting to enhance our district and have more opportunities. The discussion, to me, really comes down to, are we happy with the education we're providing for the residents, the children in our town? What is the value for that? How is that getting reflected even in our real estate market? Why is it, why does a house sell immediately in our community? Is it because we're such a pretty place? I think, no, I think it's because of our school district. And I think the really only solution, maybe cutting programming, and the other thing would be to increase class size, as Dover did. And part of our wouldfall with Barrington has become, people in Barrington voted with their feet when they saw what was happening in the Dover School District, which does have a tax cap. They increasingly have been sending their children to our school district. So it's a very legitimate conversation to have. I think it comes down to values, and I think you can't look at the tax, though, in a vacuum. I think you need to look at it also as to what your property value is here in our three towns compared to what it would be in a district that did not have the schools that we have with the quality of schools. Because upfront, maybe you're going to pay more taxes, but on that back end, your property has such an increased value, and I think it's worth it, but I'm open to have that discussion.
Denise?
Actually, Al first.
Well, does, what I was going to say, I think would be, it's rather than using the CPI, I mean, first of all, I could go to any insurance company and say CPI is 2.5%. Why are you going up 12? You know, and you need to stretch harder. I think what would be more useful for us would be look at the rate of increase for school districts in New Hampshire. What has that been over five years? What is the average for that year? Because that does take into account what Jim's talking about, which is unfunded mandates that roll down our way, pass downs from the state, pass downs from the federal government. If you're looking at, all of those districts are undergoing the same things that we are, so what are the rates that they're changing? And that, I think that would be more illuminating. In that case, is our increase at 3.2%, where does that stack up to the other districts in the state? And it would give you an idea how efficient we were relative to them. So I, I think that's my thought. And it's like, again, as I've heard, like, as everyone talks about the consumer price index, and also that Kenny talked about, like, social security increase, we could certainly tie our budgets to those, but it clear, clearly would mean that we would have to cut things from the budget. And again, if our non-negotiable is already walking in as 2.79%, what are you going to start with the cuts, is my question? Because that's what you're going to do. There's no way you can possibly maintain our programming, I think, and work under those ways. And, you know, again, I, I think we really have done due diligence in terms of efficiency of programs, because if you look at the retirement incentives, one of the things we've tried to do is to take positions that were no longer viable positions and replace that and shift that money into areas of needs. So, I mean, we, again, how do we stack up to other states and the other districts in the state of New Hampshire would be, I think, more relevant.
Just along those lines, remember, the board has an adopted set of school systems that it wants to be compared to. You adopted that two years ago, so those would be the school systems that would give you an apples-to-apples comparison.
Can we get that data?
Yep.
Okay.
Research it.
Denise?
The other thing, too, that I think it's really important to remember is, we used to not include... to not include a lot of things in the percent increase. So this is, I mean, we used to have this kind of percent increase and have additional warrant articles not in there. We routinely asked for facilities, types of things, and things, they were separate. So, I mean, and I'm not opposed, Michael, at all. I think you're bringing up a very valid point, is that I think we always have to look for efficiencies and, and I think we do that. I think actually that we do a good job of looking to see, you know, are there areas, you know, things have shifted, do we really need whatever? But I, but I also believe, and I think the voters showed in, in terms of their support for our budget last year, that we, that we truly, truly do look at, you know, what is important to us and by including everything into our percent, you know, it's that, you know, it's like, we're not saying, oh, we want this increase, but oh, by the way, we're asking for this extra over here. Like, everything is in, is in here. So I, you know, I'm not opposed to, to always looking to see if there's savings that can be had. I think the retirement incentives were huge, huge. I mean, and, and we're not realizing that savings this, this year because we had to pay those out, but going forward, we're gonna see some from that. But, you know, I, I do think we do a good job and I think, I like what Al said, I think it's a good idea to compare. But I also think you do have to compare apples to apples and when you're looking at a percent increase, you know, are you truly comparing that to a district that is including all their costs? Or are you comparing it to a district that has, you know, any number of warrant articles outside of their supposed increase?
I just, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I think it's also important to realize that we're banking $100,000 in this, you know, although the increase is 3.25, $100,000 is to replenish the, so you're banking that money, you're not spending it, you're banking it so it could be used in future years. So that, I think that's a factor. And I also think that when you figure out, you know, the tax, there's gonna be $120,000 that's gonna come back to the towns from the increase in kindergarten. So that, so that I think the total, I mean, this doesn't bring it down to the level that you're talking about, Michael, but I think the, the impact is probably 3% because you're gonna get a quarter of a percent that's gonna come back to the towns because of the increased kindergarten. So, I mean...
I, I feel like that accounting is a little bit wonky, though, because we're saying, we want, we, we should be able to exceed inflation because of unfunded mandates, but we're not, you know, we're not giving back that money. We're still taking credit for the, for the, for the funded mandate or the, the surprise funding. You know, it, it seems like double booking there.
Okay, I'll throw my other one.
You have to also keep in mind, one of the first places that people skimp or to try to get down to your CPI is capital improvement. And we had like $4 million of unfunded capital improvement. And so, not, it's not like we started with a zero balance on our capital improvement or starting to work. We're still trying to chip away at what's several million dollars of it. And so we've included in this budget is, is our catch-up, which is trying to increase the capital improvement or our Jim Rizicky's budget to meet up with that. So, I mean, I think you have to be very careful that that is at the paramount because capital improvement needs never go away and they usually only get more expensive. So while we could, in theory, cut Jim Rizicky's budget and try to get at that lower percentage initially, in the long term, it's probably gonna be more costly for us. So I think that is another thing to keep in mind of why we've been slightly higher.
And one more quick thing, which Sue highlighted in the budget was special ed costs. And we have a large special ed budget and we do an incredibly great job with special ed and I'm really proud of it and I really support it. And I think people do even move to our district because of our reputation for how we do with special ed. And I wouldn't want that to be any other way. And, but there is a cost to that and everything is always on the table, but it's another reason why I support this approach.
Maybe it would be productive to have a longer-term discussion about where we think the budget trend should be over a period of, say, five to 10 years. Because really fundamentally what this is about is what is the sustainable increase over a long period of time? I don't get the benefit, I'm not expecting to get the benefit of the increase in my home value, ever, quite frankly. You know, that's something I'm expecting my kids to get. So that doesn't help me. That doesn't help a lot of taxpayers. They're not expecting to move out, you know, within the period that helps them pay their property taxes.
Doesn't that help your kids, though, if you're leaving money to your kids?
That doesn't do me much good for the next 40 years.
Yeah, the problem with that also, though, is what, is that we, as a district, have very little opportunity to bring revenue to offset our costs. And I can say this because, you know what, I actually sit on the town side as well. So in, working, the, the way to try to mitigate the cost of the school system is that means that your town also has to increase its tax base so that it can spread the cost of that. And so it's like, there's only so much we can do as a school district, which is to control our costs. But there's the other side of the equation also, as you go to your town, is what can your town do to expand your tax base to try to offset some of our...
And that was my very first question about, about tax base.
Yeah. Okay. So we don't have to approve this, I mean, if we can continue the discussion a little bit, but we're gonna have one more whack at it the next meeting where I think we'll have, we'll have to kind of, we'll have to make a decision on that. So, is that okay to move on? So, the forms have been signed, right?
Yep.
Okay, so we have substitute pay.
So we've had the substitute rate set at this particular rate of $75 a day for many years. There has been no increase. The last time we had our conversation about this budget, the board wanted to see that rate go up by $10. And ultimately, the board decided to do that over a two-year period. So we need approval to increase the sub-rate from $75 to $80 a day. In terms of our comparability to other districts, this makes us comparable. We're not the highest, we're not the lowest. But this is a group of people that have seen no increase in their service to the district for many years and the board felt it was time to do it.
Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to increase the substitute teacher pay rate per the agreement of $5 for, I guess, over, for the 17, 18 year and then, I guess that's all we're voting for tonight, is just the first year. Yeah, so $5 for the 17, 18 school year.
Moved by Denise, second by Al. Was there discussion on this? This money's in the budget, right? Didn't they budget for this, Al? Discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Raise your hand. Seven in favor, that motion is approved. Okay, we have a motion to appoint the OR, CSD, SRO, and Truant Officers for Durham, Lee, and Madberry. And I have a motion to approve those. Al?
So moved.
Moved by Al, is her second. Second by Brian. Discussion on this? All in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, those are approved. Oops, sorry. Motion to approve the middle school maternity leave of absence tenability from December 2nd, 2017 to March 9th, 2018. Denise?
Yep, I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Moved by Denise, is her second. Second by Brian. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, that motion is approved. Motion to approve middle school overnight field trip to Mirror Vista in Tufton Borough. Brian?
Motion approved.
Moved by Brian, is her second. Second by Dan. Discussion?
Can we just have the 30-second what's going on up there?
Good evening, Javishaw, the principal of the middle school. This is actually something new that the fifth grader teachers want to try out. The plan will be, half of the fifth graders will go up Monday through Wednesday afternoon, then the other half of the students will go up Wednesday afternoon till Friday afternoon. I'm looking forward to the opportunity. I've met with the Mirror Vista staff, the person that runs the program. I've been impressed. I personally will be going up there to spend at least a couple nights to kind of scope it out, for lack of a better term, see what kind of opportunities this is gonna offer our students. I do know many families in the community go up to Mirror Vista during summer camp and speak very highly of it. So it's, it's something essentially like a pilot to see if there's something we want to continue to do. This opportunity was given, given to us last June where the teachers kind of want to really try it out. I honestly don't necessarily like the timing in terms of it, but again, I want to be supportive of my teachers that want to provide this opportunity to the kids. And even future years, I, I would expect that we would, again, honestly, we're just, we'll see how it goes. If it's a great opportunity for our kids, ideally would be something we would continue to do in fifth grade.
Do you have a sense of what the participation level's gonna be?
We would expect and want all kids to attend, the whole fifth grade. So, I mean, from time to time, we have unique circumstances where, when we do any kind of field trip or overnight trip, there might be a unique circumstance where the parents don't want their child to attend and, of course, we would support that. But the goal is to have every, every fifth grader attend and experience this.
Other questions?
Sounds cool. Sounds cool.
Years ago, we did go to Mirror Vista.
Yeah.
Years ago. We, we did. But I haven't experienced it under my principalship.
I think we have a motion and a second on that, right?
Yeah.
Are there further questions? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the field trip is approved. A motion to approve Oyster River High School coach volunteers?
A motion.
Denise?
Yep, I'll make a motion to approve the coach volunteers.
Moved by Denise, second by Brian. Discussion? All those in favor, raise your hand. Seven in favor, that motion is approved. Committee updates?
I already, I've already done long-range planning, so, yeah.
Policy committee met today, so we'll have some, probably four policies to, I would think, maybe three or four coming up, I mean, for the next meeting, to get back on approving policies. Other committees? Negotiation with the bus drivers and the, it's two groups, right?
The para group, which includes the secretaries and the support staff. The bus drivers are unit unto themselves.
Okay, so that's ongoing?
Both of those meetings, one is happening Friday and the other meeting is happening next week. And we'll be going into non-public to talk about the parameters that you want the negotiating committee to work under.
Other, other committee updates? Public comment?
Welcome. Hello, my name is Deborah Alberts. I live at Riverview Road in Durham, New Hampshire. I'm a 27-year resident. I've been a New Hampshire public school educator for 30 years. I was a one, once an interim assistant principal for five months for a school of 1,400 students in the state, over 500, 5,000 students in the district. I'm also a mother of a wonderful son who has very successfully come through this establishment and is thriving. Thank you. When he was a kindergarten child, he was the victim of an assault on a school bus incident in this district 18 years ago, whereupon the school did reimburse us for his attended care and rightfully shared with us and then sealed the documents. Thank you, Dr. Morse, for following in that tradition.
You're welcome.
Okay. Those are my credentials. I recently had an opportunity to meet and talk with Congressman, excuse me, sorry. Yeah, that'd be great. Congressman John Lewis. His voice is on my mind in coming to you tonight. Sorry, I'm a little emotional about this, apparently. Dr. Morse, I read your statement in the paper about no room for racism and that this problem cannot simply be fixed with punishments. And I agree that we do need to clearly address the needs of the students who have not been brought up in a way that they respect everyone as equal. But I would like to address the consequence approach. The racial tolerance climate has changed in New Hampshire, as demonstrated in the eight-year-old biracial child lynched in Claremont last week. The police response was weak and the governor's response to the DOJ, to call upon the DOJ was slow. I don't think we can escape the fact that those who practice discrimination are becoming bolder. Public remarks written in the Seacoast today, or yesterday, were deleted because they were so horrible. In today's article in Seacoast, there were some that I am really reluctant to repeat, but I think you need to know them. One person said, quote, "Their meek and tender-hearted boy, perhaps they ought to teach their, quote, 'weak boy,' how to defend himself. The parents cannot pretend this type of behavior will be fixed. The media teaches that it happens regardless of what century we're in." Another person wrote, "This is what happens to kids of mixed marriages. Not good for the children." These are the types of adults that feed this information into the hearts and minds of the children that you teach." So, well, working with the students is crucial. I believe we need to set a new standard. I need, I think we need, excuse me, I don't know why I'm so rocked here, but I think we need to be a standard bearer in New Hampshire. I think this school needs to set a higher standard than any other school has set before. And I would like to see some sort of a trickle-up consequence, because these children go come from nowhere. And we need to let their parents know that there will be consequences for their family in ways that will not harm their child, but will affect the parents. What can we do about that? But we too need to consider that attitude. And we may need to make it clear that our community does not condone that kind of citizen. And I just have some brief ideas on how this might work, but Kenny, when you go to your policy committee, I'd like you to really consider this trickle-up concept. One of the things that I mentioned about my son is that in the last two months of kindergarten, we drove him to school. And in my wisdom and age and hindsight, it should have been the other way around. The child who is the aggressor should have been driven to school by his parents. They should have taken the onus. And that would have been an inconsequence to those parents who raised a child who needed to learn some better lessons. So, some of the things that I thought of, and I'm just tossing these out because it's just, you know, but I have a couple of suggestions. Buses are, need to be better supervised if they're not. I really think that, well, it doesn't even matter. That child should not ride the bus anymore that year. That's a good consequence. And I think it falls on the parents that inconveniences them. And maybe people will start thinking, oh, yeah, I better pay attention to what my kids are saying and doing. And the other one is aids to monitor them during recess. And the third one is I heartily suggest this. The victim of these attacks, or any attacks like this, should be, they should be allowed their first choice of courses or classrooms and be permitted a classroom environment free of their attacker. That attacker gets second choice and gets moved wherever. And I think those kinds of things might help protect our community. And I really would like to see, really, you know, these aren't the best ideas, but I really would like to see this school board set a higher standard and a landmark standard for the state of New Hampshire and how discrimination is treated in our schools. And thank you for your time.
Thanks, Deb. Oh, other public comment? Closing actions, we have the future meetings established here. And we'll have to have, actually, two non-public sessions, one for a negotiating issue and one for a student issue. So I was wondering if I could have a motion to go into non-public for a negotiating issue. Kenny, could you make the motion or?
I'm going to do that.
Is it, yeah?
So, under RSA 91- A colon 3, Roman Room 2, A, the compensation of public employees, I move that we go into non-public session.
Moved by Kenny, is her second. Second by Denise. We need a roll call vote to go into non- into non-public.
Dan Klein, yes.
Michael Williams, yes.
Kenny Rook, yes.
Denise Day, yes.
Tom Newkirk, yes.
Al Holland, yes.
Brian Sisneros, yes.
Okay, so we're going to go into non-public, then we'll come out of this non-public and go into second non-public for a student issue.